All right, we have only four members tonight, but that is a quorum. What we're going to do is take some comments as it relates to the last meeting and some of the discussion that we had last meeting. We are not going to take formal action tonight. There's going to be a public hearing on June 10th where we will make our recommendation as to what maps we believe should be utilized in the Center Business District. So tonight, because we've had several hearings on this, we would kind of like to limit public comment to a few minutes, just to get everybody's feedback. And then again, we're going to have another public forum on June 10th, and that is when we will make a formal recommendation to Town Council, and then Town Council will vote on whether they accept our recommendation or not.
Where's that going to be held?
Here, most likely, right Denise? It'll be here.
Thank you.
We also are going to have a discussion about replacing Mr. Carroll. Just from a personal standpoint, losing Robert really hurts me. I thought Robert was a great member. He was very articulate in what he said. He was very helpful. So replacing Robert is not going to be that easy. I'm hoping to at least start that process tonight, and then we'll make a recommendation to Town Council as to who we're going to replace Robert with after tonight. So those are the two main things on our agenda. As always, we'll take public comment. So we can start off by public comment as it relates to the last meeting. Mr. Riley?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Charlie Riley, 3 Cottage Park Road. I know I have given the Planning Board various documents that I have that I think show the correct boundary of the Center Business District, particularly as it relates to Somerset Avenue and Cottage Park Road. I want to go back over some of these. In February 1st of 2018, I had received a copy of Terry Delahanty's report, and his report reviewed every voting, every zoning vote that was taken place in the town, including going back to the last 155 years. A quick note on that, people might be amused by it. In 1914, the town decided to create a planning committee. There was an amendment to that motion made by Mr. Tucksbury that one member must be a lady. Unfortunately, the male members of the county, they voted down the amendment and then moved on to the main motion. But I think we've come a long way since 1914. But let me tell you what, I'll give you a couple of quotes from the correspondence back and forth with Terry at that time. He said, "There's been much discussion over the boundary of the CBD. The recently adopted master plan included a map that showed several adjacent residential homes included in the Center Business District. Due to the in-depth research done by the town manager and his staff, it's been established that these homes are not in the Center Business District. The major reason for the concern is if the homes are not in the residential district, the more strict zoning requirements for CBD parcels adjacent to a residential community would not apply."
Would you repeat that, please? Would you just repeat that for me, please?
Well, this was my memo to Terry Delahanty. It said, "The major reason for the concern from myself and the neighbors is that if the homes are not in the residential district or in the business district, the more restrictive zoning requirements, two and a half story versus before, the CBD parcels adjacent to a residential district wouldn't apply, because the building would not be adjacent to a residential district, it would be adjacent to a business district." Terry wrote back and said, "We also note the references to the town's adopted master plan and the map of the CBD that was included in the master plan." There's the opinion of Colomine Page, and then the Massachusetts law, "A master plan is a conceptual planning and research document which is advisory and non-bidary." And this was written on 2005 or 2018. I looked at several of the addendums to Terry's report, and I found one that said that, "When the town decided that it was necessary to adopt a business districts, particularly in the center, the action was to take existing commercial, the commercial property, business property, and put that into a business district." So there were definite votes to include certain properties in a business district. The rest of the properties remained in a residential district, but the specific action was taken. Here are the buildings that are already up. We're coming along with zoning. It didn't happen, there was no such thing as zoning until the 19-teens. By the time they got to run, didn't find it necessary without business zoning. The buildings were already up, and the action quoted in the Planning Board report at the town meeting is that they were zoning existing business property as business. So I think that that might help to give you some guidance as to how to draw the boundary. Thank you.
Thank you. Next. Dottie.
Dottie, Precinct 4. I have a question based around the issues that you've received from the so-called "mapping decision." What is happening to the state funding? I think it was $3 million for Center Business Development. What has happened to the, what is going to happen to the state funding?
Yeah, I honestly don't know the answer to that question. That's probably something you should ask of Town Council. I'm not sure of that. We're not privy to that. I'm not privy to that information.
Well, what's the mapping decision? You haven't made it yet.
What?
Well, you said the mapping decision.
Once they, with the last meeting that we attended and that young man that we gave $30,000.
The analysis?
And they gave the five houses are now in the Center Business District?
No, they gave an analysis to give us input. There was no decision.
But if there is a decision made, isn't that state funding still privy to change either?
I honestly don't know the answer to that question.
It should be taken into consideration when you make your recommendation.
I can't answer something I'm not sure of, so I just have to say I don't know the answer to that question.
Would it be hoofed somebody to ask?
I think Town, you should refer that to Town Council, and let's see what they say about that. Our role is to receive as much information as possible, and then we make a recommendation as to what we believe should be the maps. And then Town Council will make its decision based on our recommendation. They can accept our recommendation, they can reject our recommendation, they can use portions of our recommendation.
So you're strictly the maps? You're not involved with the fiscal side of the coin at all?
No, that is not our role. That is not the plan, that's not the state law. If you want to look at Mass General Law's Chapter 40A, what our specific role is, has nothing to do with it.
No, I respect that. I'm just curious as to whether or not we would have any kind of an issue over state funding that we've been assigned.
Again, that's the Town Council's question.
Man, outside of smart growth districts, state funding isn't normally tied to zoning decisions.
So our $3 million is not in jeopardy?
We'll ask the question, but it's not usually...
Okay. I'd like you to take it into consideration if you could.
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Okay, anything further? Yes, Ms. Cofflin.
Hi, Jeanne Cofflin, Precinct 5, 23 Cottage Park Road. I just want to echo Tom Riley's sentiment tonight and just say that I'm sorry about what happened after the analysis of last week. I think losing Mr. Carroll was a big loss. I feel bad about that and that it had come to that. But it was a frustrating night, and we, he sort of backed us up, saying when we would ask, "We've already got our answer twice," one from the town manager, Terry Delahanty, in writing, published in the paper, and then from, you know, their legal consultant, and then we got it from Al McGee after we had been to many meetings, and they said Al McGee was the person that would make this decision, and we got it here at Planning Board probably last month at this point. And I just want to just echo, I think, my neighbors and many concerned citizens as to why, you know, we keep doing this. We keep looking for an answer that we already get. So I just would hope that you would take that into consideration when you're doing it and realize, you know, putting our homes in it, how it does impact us. And after the analysis, it's just scary to think now to put more homes into it. So Mr. Riley's house looks like it's in it after those new maps of the analysis. So I just think it's kind of crazy. I think it's just gone on way too long, and I just plead with you to try to make a reasonable decision, and, you know, we've been coming a long time. Like he had said, I saw his frustration that night. He was as frustrated as we were, saying it's crazy that we're still talking about this two and a half years later. So thank you all.
Joanna.
Thanks, Joanna Schwartz, and Bella Properties. I think you know my position from my perspective in my seat. We have also received two or more decisions that are in favor of us and the zoning that we're looking for on our project, notwithstanding the fact that when we bought our property, everyone in the town, including people from the town manager's office, the planning, the Town Council, and the building department, and every publicly available document at the time showed us that our building was well within the bounds of four-story zoning. We then experienced a reversal of that through the documentation that Jeanne is referring to, and then another reversal of that based on the documentation that was shown the other night in the other meeting that we had here. Obviously tremendous frustration on all sides here. It's worth noting that many people made many very expensive and, you know, life-changing decisions based on what was in that master plan. Seems like a lot of work and time and energy and thought went into that plan from the town, and yet all of it seems to be kind of like up in flux because of like kind of administrative sloppiness in implementing it, right? This plan went through, there was advisors and consultants, and there were meetings, and there were approvals. I mean, that's shown in the town record. And yet somewhere along the line, whatever technically needed to happen to implement the map, to implement the plan, to do whatever, just kind of fell by the wayside, which has created this inertia and paralysis and nightmare for everyone in the room over the last few years. I just want, I am really happy that it seems like you guys are right now on a path to solving the problem, even though the solve, the issue is not solved. I would like to take a little bit of a bigger picture here in my, in my comments to you tonight. It's not just about my project, it's not just about Jeanne's house, it's about Winthrop, it's about the future of Winthrop. I really believe in the master plan as it was presented. I think a huge amount of work and intelligence went into that plan. That's why I invested in this town. I think it is how to take Winthrop to become successful now, immediately now, and for the future generations of this town. And I would say that we should not let the voices of a few people muddle the waters in what was administrative sloppiness, and let's just get that plan adopted as it was intended. I do think that money may be at risk. I don't know legally, but that money was granted to our town, that infrastructure money was granted to Winthrop based upon the adoption of that master plan. Like that was what was used to sell that money. So whether or not legally and technically, I don't know the answer, but I would certainly look into that and make sure that that money is not at risk before anything is substantively changed from that plan. I also think that there are some, you know, major issues with people coming and making decisions based on what is supposedly the laws of the town, the zoning of the town, and having it capriciously changed from under the rug. I just want you guys to understand, you know, leadership is not consensus, okay? We have consensus. John F. Kennedy was the most popular president in the history of our nation. Do you know what his approval rating was? 70%. That means that 30% of the people in this country never liked anything he did. So we're never going to get to 100% here. You guys are in a position, gather the information, it's been gathered 100 times from all the people in this room. It's imperfect, it is never going to be perfect. Let's move forward with the best decision for the town, and I really hope it will be by ratifying the master plan as it was presented two years ago and already adopted by the council. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Cipollina.
This is Chairman James Cipollina, 217 Griffith Avenue. I have a question for clarification and also just a small comment. And just for purposes of clarification, is the board tasked with reporting to the Town Council what you think the boundary is today? Or is it tasked with telling the Town Council what you recommend that it should be? Or thirdly, are you tasked with determining what it is and then suggesting that it should be changed? Because to me, it's really not clear what the task of the Planning Board is at this point and what the council has asked you to do.
My understanding is that they're looking for a recommendation. Now, whether that recommendation entitles us to make a decision as to what we believe the boundaries actually are or what we think they should be, I have to leave that up to the board. I mean, I'm only one vote, so I'll just let that hearing take place, and if the majority is comfortable with making a decision, then that would be our recommendation. If the majority is comfortable with making a proposal, then that would be our position. So I think your question is just maybe a little premature, because I don't know how the board would see our recommendation.
Well, at some point, someone needs to frame the legal issue for debate at the public hearing. What is the issue that the board? And apparently, and I may have missed it, if it's out there, I didn't see it, if it's going to be clarified for the board, and it should come probably from the Town Council, ask the Planning Board its recommendation on dot, 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 and it's that dot, dot, dot that doesn't seem to be too clear at this point. Maybe it will change between now and then. The other thing, I'm sorry.
That's a good question. My understanding is that current boundary lines would go to Board of Zoning Appeals or Building Inspector at this point, and we're being tasked with defining what the CBD is, you know, in the future.
Correct.
We're not looking to verify what it used to be. I think there's a million opinions on that, and we debate forever. I think our task as a board is to determine what the zoning should be, what the boundary lines should be for the CBD.
Yeah, fair enough. So long as everybody knows going into the public hearing what the issue is, and I think that will cut through a lot of the sort of, you know, the smoke and lack of clarity sometimes that seems to permeate public hearings, you know, just globally. The other thing I wanted to mention too, and looking at some of the historical data and through the archives of how the CBD evolved, I believe it was 2014, it was the beginning of July, the Planning Board and the Town Council held a joint hearing on the proposal for the CBD ordinance and the map, which was part of the CBD ordinance. By our ordinances, the map is part of the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance, obviously, Section 17, is part of the Winthrop ordinances globally. After the public hearing, or the conclusion of the public hearing, it was voted that the matter would be continued till a date at the end of July. It was around July 22nd that they were asked. It was the last or second last week of July, and at that time, the council voted to adopt the CBD as written, including the map.
Can they do that?
And that was, I'm sorry?
Can they do that? That's kind of the confusion I'm having, is that they're adopting a document that's not legally enforceable, that has a map as a reference map, but not a legally approved map?
Well...
That's what, that's what my confusion has come in.
Yeah, I, yeah, I get that. But my reading of it was that, and I believe it was Council of Boncory read the entire CBD ordinance. How we got through it all, I don't know, but it seemed to be a very lengthy document, and it was a description of the map. And it said at the end, it was adopted, it was eight to one, it was one councillor who abstained, and the last entry in that record says that it will then be published, this vote and the result of it will be published on the town website. That vote and the results of that vote are still on the town website, and the map that's referenced and is voted as part of the CBD is still showing on the town website. So, you know, and I have all respect in the world for the police chief who was acting as the acting town manager at the time. I consulted with him after, as he was making his decision. He showed me what he had, he gave me what he and his staff had come up with. As many department heads as there are, as many opinions you may get, but I think that it would be not the town manager's office and not some other department head or committee that has the authority to determine what the zoning ordinance is, what to interpret a part of it. Although it is really interesting reading, there's a lot of good Winthrop history in there. But I thought particularly that that vote in the month of July after your joint hearing was very instructive on the issue.
Thank you very much. Mr. Gill.
Peter Gill, Precinct 5. Sorry I was late, I'm not going to repeat. But I wanted to take this opportunity to recognize and thank Bob Carroll for his efforts and participation and deliberation of the Planning Board over the last, for several, several successful developments in Winthrop. Bob's a highly qualified architect who served with distinction on the board for many years. He also served as chairman of the Citizens Advisory Economic Development Committee, and studied the Center Business District and the middle school reuse. Bob's expertise and professionalism as a member of this board was sorely missed. During my time as council president, I had the opportunity firsthand to witness the professionalism, dedication, and hard work of this board, including Bob, as you deliberated, negotiated, and monitored the progress of many successful building developers and projects in Winthrop. And I watch now as you continue to review the Center Business District zoning, which you developed after much negotiation and discussion back and forth back in 2014. Your agenda tonight is a difficult one. It's to analyze the Winthrop zoning map for recommendations to the Town Council. As we all know, the determination of the Center Business District boundaries has been a long, confusing, frustrating experience, not only to the developers, but to the neighbors, as well as the Planning Board and the Town Council. There's been a tremendous amount of research done on this question. When Terry Delahanty was interim town manager, he did a comprehensive study and searched the town records and maps dating back several years. Al McGee recently made a determination. Both concluded the Center Business District does not include any residential properties. Subsequent to that, an outside firm was hired and came in with a different opinion. This Center Business District development is crucial to the town. It's an embarrassment to drive through that today. As somebody mentioned earlier, will any further delay on this issue put the $4 million state grant at risk? This is not a time to question who did what and when and why. To borrow previous speaker's comment about placing the administrative sloppiness, that could be an accurate thing. Whatever happened yesterday or the day before or five years ago, let's put it aside, let's make this thing work. It's time to move on. It's time to end this confusion. It's time to end this frustration. It's time to get this thing going. You as a Planning Board have been shocked and you've been frustrated. I can understand it, and we lost Bob because of it. I think we lost Peter Rook because of it too, if we want to go back a little further. It's time to move on. I strongly urge you as a Planning Board to discuss the issue of the Center Business District tonight, and to make a decision tonight on your opinion of the recommendations for the Center Business District boundaries tonight, and to forthwith present that recommendation to the Town Council for them to make a decision on May 20th, one week from tomorrow. Enough is enough. I thank you, I thank you for all you've done, and I'm asking you, please, put this to bed in whichever way you believe is right. Put it to bed. Joanna has her ideas and has the problem, and I understand it. We need to move this thing forward. Please, tonight, tonight.
Thank you. Mr. Demento.
Correct. Michael Demento, Precinct 2. Thank you everyone for your comments. Mine is a little different. Whichever way you guys vote the map, you're going to vote the map. My opinion, I don't have any leeway on that. I would just like this Planning Board to look at the CBD which is inside the Ingleside Park flood basin, and I would like all development in the CBD to have to file a stormwater management plan and engineering impact report along with their first initial plans that they're giving to the Planning Board. I did a public information request, Joanna, and no offense to your development, but you guys have not filed an engineering report per the town clerk.
Yes, we did.
That public information request was 2019049, filed on April 16th, 2019.
What was filed on April 16th? Whatever we filed for the Planning Board included like a 50-page engineering report.
I did not, I...
I don't know if it's online.
Right here, Mr. Chairman? There is no...
I would, I would respect, we asked that you don't go back and forth and ask her.
I did not engage.
I don't have it in front of me, so I can't give you an opinion.
Correct, but I filed notice with the town clerk of an EIR, and was told for public information request, 2019049, that no such report has been filed.
We were told that.
Right here in an email, sir.
Okay.
But I... I find it hard to believe myself, but it's, I have it in an email form, feel like I'm going to forward it to...
No, no, I mean, because I...
I just want to, I just want to mention something. You brought this up last time.
I did.
Stormwater management. I couldn't agree with you more. I think, however, that one step today, which has taken years to even get to this point, is to define the CBD boundaries are. I think if we get through that, it'd be exciting. I think my opinion on that statement in general is products of a certain size in general across this entire town should be following stormwater management.
Correct.
Should not, so I don't want to limit it to just the CBD or just the side park.
That's why I said, just...
This is a larger problem. We're in an area that has a lot of stormwater management and flood problems in general.
Every development should be required...
I'm willing to pass a motion in probably another meeting where we address townwide, decide the scale of projects that need to address that, and I think, I mean, so I'm on board with you.
And yeah, there's nothing against this project.
One at a time, please.
I just don't want to muddy the waters of tonight's agenda.
When something is developed upstream, it affects downstream, and the development upstream should mitigate the effects of the downstream issues.
I agree.
I'd just like this Planning Board to address those concerns on any project throughout this town going forward.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You're welcome. And thank you. Mr. Riley? Mr. Ed after you.
I just have two more points. I was kind of shocked last, at the last meeting, to see a proposed drawing by the consultant that drew the line back around my house and included four houses on Cottage Park Road. Line would come up, Somerset Avenue, across the bottom of 58, it was in for about 10 feet, up behind two houses, Jeanne Cofflin's, Cape Codamides, out into the street, up and in and include mine. Now, one of the reasons for the shock, when I started, but when I got home, I looked at it a couple of days later, I said, "You know, there's impact of this." That was in fact the line, this proposal. I don't think it's serious. I don't think it's, I think it's a crazy mixed-up proposal, but it was a proposal, right in there it says, "Proposed boundary line." Now, I don't know how anybody can change the line without specifically rezoning the property. You'd have to come up with a motion to rezone the property from residential A to business District, adopt it, go to the council, and have a recommendation from the Planning Board, and go to the council for a two-thirds vote. It doesn't change by drawing a map. I believe the task, and I was in all the council meetings where they discussed this, is to draw a map of what the boundaries are now. Not what could be, not what somebody thinks they should be, what they in fact are, and that's the map that they're looking for. They're not looking for recommendations to move the lines to include our homes in the residential district, which they're not in right now, and which we've conclusively proven are not in the boundary line. But I think, I think your task is that, I believe that if, one of the problems is you've got a developer who is legitimately was told that the boundary line was somewhere else, that was false, they've given false information... else, that was false, they've given false information. The task of this county, of this planning board is to make a recommendation to the council that draws a map that shows the existing boundaries of the Center Business district. Thank you.
My name's Johnny. I live in Precinct 1, and I've been sitting here tonight listening, and it's the same confusion that I've heard for four years now. I've been concerned and followed this since at least 2014, and I echo Mr. Gill in that it's time to move forward and to make a decision about what these boundaries are. I also, when I hear somebody that's as knowledgeable in zoning as Mr. Sipoleto being somewhat confused about what was coming out of this meeting tonight, and where boundary lines are, and I listen to Mrs. Schwartz being frustrated, everyone has a right to say what this is, and what we have is differing opinions. The last meeting I was at, we had an overlay from Mass GIS overlaid by the 2006 zoning map. And the 2006 was enlarged to a point you no longer could tell a boundary, and also it was not properly registered to the GIS map. Furthermore, Copeland and Page has ruled, at least twice I know of, that the planning document that was adopted and its contents are advisory. I think there is a need to look at, I think, the outstanding research that Town Manager Delahanty did, but also to step back and look at your current zoning code, Chapter 17 of the zoning code, and under the heading called Boundaries. There are several guidelines, including the statement of an official zoning map, which is 1983, is done by Whitman and Howard, that has never been repealed or replaced, has been added to and amended by the town meeting. And what it says on boundary lines on the map, and I hope I can remember this properly, I'm sure I can be corrected by Mr. Sipoleto who's an expert, well, when determining the boundary of a district, it's the center line of a street, an alley, or a railroad. For those that are at a distance, by distance measured on the map, two, by meets and bounds, and three, by the property boundary, as shown in the assessor's map. There are some places in town where boundaries do split residential districts and sometimes commercial districts, but in general, the rule has been list down to follow the property lines. Where they don't follow property lines, it's usually by adjoining a properties to create a larger property, or splitting or subdividing a property. Taking that into effect, what we have are some rules that are in our own zoning, Chapter 1750, about how to determine it. Secondly, we have a zoning map from 1983, which is lost, but I think an aggressive look, beginning with the search of files, beginning primarily with the man this room is named after, whose files are in the basement, is Mr. Hardy kept almost everything. You can go to Land Survey, what is it, I forget, it's Land Corps, the Land Survey Registration in the state. You can go to the archives of Whitman and Howard, and they're required to keep these and to, even when they retire, and to have them stored in perpetuity. So there is research avenues to find this. The one amendment that is very clear that happened to that map is dated in 1987, the creation of the Center Business district as reprimand, as done by the town meeting and adopted. The map is clear, it's adjoint to the minutes, and it sets out the boundaries of the Center Business district, and they follow the property lines. And thank you very much. I want to thank you, everyone here. You all have a most difficult job, and I'm sure everyone appreciates how you struggle with what you do. Thank you.
Mr. Dowd.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Jack Dowd, Precinct 3. Referring to a letter of resignation from former board member, Mr. Carroll. The third paragraph, he mentions the April 30 meeting, joint meeting with the planning board informs in place, and he states, "What I saw last evening and read in a recent letter from the town's commissioner of inspection services, Al McGee showed a complete lack of rigor and professional competence." I read Al McGee's letter to the board, and it seems to me that he got very astute help in writing that letter. I'm not sure who it was from, but it seemed like a combined effort. He also mentions, and I'm referring to Mr. Carroll, that the planning board began this effort in 2012. It seems we have four or five different opinions in this room about boundaries, maps, how to refer to, what year a map was made. He mentioned again, the planning board started this effort in 2012. The second paragraph, he mentions that he, in 2018, there's a recommendation that the zoning map be professionally updated and qualified. Since that request, the board has been mired in uncertainty. It seems that this board is still mired in uncertainty, as evidenced by the different opinions we have from members of this room. I don't know how you can go about making a recommendation to the town council at this point without going back and checking maps that were made. I don't care which one you pick out, but let's, you know, let's not do something in one month where it took seven years to get to this point. I don't think you can do it. So I think there shouldn't be a recommendation from this board to the town council about any type of map that you're going to pick. I don't think any of them are going to make a difference. Email, on the second page of his letter, "The email that I sent to town council on April 21, 2019 clearly outlined why the planning board has the authority to grant special permits in the Center Business district." I think this has changed at this point. The change was recommended by the planning board in 2014, and subsequently was voted on by the Rules and Ordinance and the town council. This is the recollection of members of the board, as well as the former chair, Peter Roach, and the chair of Rules and Ordinance, Philip Boncorde. So I'm wondering what this means. This is the recollection. Why isn't Mr. Carroll referring to definite minutes with the planning board or definite minutes of the town council? Why is it the recollection? And I think that's the problem here. We're not going by anything definite. Unfortunately, and he states, "Unfortunately, that vote was never changed on the online version of our town bylaws." I'd like to know what that means. So I think there's a lot of things still today that aren't clear. I would say that you shouldn't make any type of recommendation to the town council until things are very clear. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Mr. Lucero.
Paul Lucero, 3321 Somerset Ave. I just would like some clarification from the board. On the June 10 public hearing, are you going to present what the plans are, and people are going to talk about it? Are we going to be still talking about it, and there's going to be nothing definite put forward? My second question is, in discussing the plans of the CBD, are you including the middle school and all that stuff, or is that going to be a separate presentation at a later time? Is it going to be included in your presentation on June 10? Just some clarification, because personally, I don't want to show up at another meeting like this and just discuss the same stuff over and over and over again. I would like to see the board come up with a definite, here's the Center Business district, discuss, and then after the discussion, present it to the town council. Thank you.
Could you respond?
Yeah, sure.
That's my understanding as well, coming into tonight. I think it's the first time I've heard about June 10, but I think coming into tonight, my understanding was to define the boundaries of the CBD, which would include or not include the middle school site. My opinion, we've already voted on that, we've already passed it to the town council, it's also kind of gone nowhere, so I think now is our opportunity to define what the CBD is, what the limits of it are, and rope in the middle school to it, so we don't have another vote again. There's obviously been a lot of confusion. I think, to Mr. Dowd's comment, I think our task is to bring clarity to it, to not be mired in confusion, which we have been. You know, so I think our goal is, is to define what the town wants as we move forward. You know, economic growth, density, those are the things that were voted on by the town council, those are the things that were established in the master plan. Sounds like a lot of confusion as to why that wasn't fully adopted, but I think now is our opportunity to clarify some of these things.
Thank you. Thank you. Mr. Ed.
I'm sorry, one more thing. I thought I was going a little long before, and I was... Everybody that says we need to move forward, I think is right. It's time to end this. Also, the people that you hear from, like Mr. Riley and the other neighbors, they're not just cranks, they have people in their neighborhood, much like when the town meeting...
Please, we can't have...
Like during town meeting. They rely on them to stand up and be eloquent in stating their views. We also have people in this room from Precinct 4, Precinct 1, I think half the precincts and more are here, and they're here because they're interested. But also, I had hoped at a visioning meeting, that that would have been a visioning meeting, the last one I went to a couple of weeks ago, can't get past what these lines are. You will not move forward, and I doubt you'll gain a great deal of public trust until this is settled, and I hope you do well on that. But I do think it's important to settle this now, so that there's a playing field, and so developers are comfortable coming to this town. And I'll echo Mrs. Schwartz. If I was a developer, I wouldn't put a nickel in here until this gets straightened out, and we'll never have, you know, town needs rezoning. We should have been talking about 50 years from now, and what's the best use for that site, where the rink and the former school are at. We should be thinking 50 years down the road. We should realize that a zoning map will always be imperfect, because you'll always have unconforming, pre-existing, unconforming uses, just as you have with two three-deckers in the center today. But it needs to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments as it relates to Mr. Dowd?
I would just like for the listening public to compliment the board. It's a voluntary board, and your task is tremendous. I remember back as a town meeting member, we had a developer come in who had run into a number of issues, dealing with the varying departments within the town, and ended up not staying in town. And as the gentleman just pointed out, the actions that you take today and up until June, and your recommendations are going to be the groundwork and the foundation for the future developing, whether or not the town has potential growth, whether or not the town has the opportunity to welcome that change and that growth, especially in the Center Business district. Your task is very, very difficult, but very, very incapable hands, I might add, and I thank you for the service that you provide to us. Thank you.
Any further public comment as it, I'm sorry, I don't know your name.
I'm Ruth Ashton. I live in Precinct 5. I am a little concerned about Mr. Sipoleto's questions about what exactly is the mission and what you're trying to do here, what the task really is, and I'm concerned about the quality of some of the maps that we looked at at that last meeting. They have no dates, they have no legend, they're just, you know, they looked like maybe I traced them out of the back of the phone book. So I'm really concerned that you're going to use one of those to make your decision.
Just as a point of clarification for everybody, our recommendation could be that we get clearer maps. I mean, I cannot specify what each member is going to make for a recommendation.
Okay.
I don't know that. That's why to Mr. Lucero's point or Mr. Dowd's point, I can't predict what the future is going to bring. We should have two more members here on the next meeting, and each person may have their own opinion. So we may not even have, you know, a decision made that the majority can support. Maybe we will, maybe we won't. I don't know. The point is well taken, that I think we need maps that are clear enough.
I guess I would ask you to please use better maps than what we saw. And I appreciate all your time and all your efforts.
Honestly, that point's very well taken. I appreciate you saying that, because we would need that, and I agree with that.
Thanks.
Thank you. Any further comments on Center Business district, the maps, the first part of the agenda for tonight? If not, then I'm going to close this. Or we have to leave it open for the next meeting, Denise?
We have to discuss.
You want to discuss? Okay, so, all right, Gina, go ahead.
Well, I agree with everybody's frustration. We've sat here month after month after month, and I can continue echoing for several years, listening to everyone's frustration in a way where we can't comment, we can't respond, we can't share any independent work we've done, but just sit and listen to everyone's frustrations, and I hear all of them, I've heard them all, and I agree with you. I can assure you that we're not just taking a piece of paper and a crayon and drawing lines. There's been a lot of work that we've done, I know I've done, personally, looking things up, doing my own research, trying to understand the history, the rules. I don't even know how long I've been on this board, at least 10, 11 years. So I've gone through all this with you, and I understand the frustration. I don't believe that we can make a decision tonight because we need, it has to be a public hearing, it has to have the announcements in the paper and all of that, and so we have to give a formal notice. And June 10, my understanding, Denise, is the soonest that we can do that, right? I can't speak for the other members on the board, but I have every expectation, and I am totally motivated to make sure that our recommendation is all locked up and pretty imperfect to get to town council, so that they can make a decision, so that the whole town can move forward. I can't guarantee that we're going to make everyone happy, and that's not really what we're trying to do. We're trying to do what's right and what's best for the town. And honestly, what I think has been missing from all of this the last few years is logic and common sense, and hopefully we can put some of that in there, too.
Thank you. Chris, comment?
I mean, I could even, I think I've made my kind of opinion clear on this and passed votes on this board, I think, kind of tonight in conversation. I think it's unfortunate that the town crafted a vision for what they saw the future of Winter back in 2014, through, sounds like maybe administrative snafus or not follow-through, that that vision wasn't entirely adapted by the town. I mean, so I would strive, I think, we'll do our research in the next few weeks, but I would strive to see the MACP maps and maps of the 2014 master plan to be formally adopted by the town. My opinion is that they should include the middle school site within the CBD.
My opinion is that they should include the middle school site within the CBD. I think for economic growth, true density and the future of that area, that's what this town has called for for a while now. That's what the town council has voted on. That's what developers are coming in expecting of our town. And the fact that these are not adapted in a clear and concise way that developers are able to understand and invest in our town. I think that this process alone, I know, has scared away people from investing in the town. I think that's a shame. I think that if we were to go back to a 1983 map or debate town boundaries from generations prior that weren't looking forward to that economic growth, I think that would be unfortunate for the town. I think we need to, it sounds like June 10th will be the soonest, we need to resolve this soon so we can get people interested in growing that part of the CBD. I mean, I think we've already seen some growth and change and I think it's going to be exciting down there. So some of the things that were voted on 2014, I would like to see more clearly and legally wrapped up and adapted by the town. That's kind of where I stand now and I'll stand there on June 10th.
Thank you. Benny?
My colleagues haven't left me much, much to say, other than the fact that I appreciate the frustration by the residents and I'm sure they can appreciate the frustration that this board has had, despite what the people may think. This board is not full of chaos and everything else. We've done a lot of wonderful things over the last eight years that I've been on the board. There was a no-win situation here on either side, whether it be the residents or the development. So we have to find a happy medium somewhere down the middle. And I'm sure with the information that we have, and like Gina said, it's not just a matter of looking at things and home sitting on the computer, going through research and whatnot. And it's not as easy as everybody thinks. But just to reiterate what my colleagues said, I'm sure that we'll be able to come up with a reasonable plan and a decision on a reasonable map.
Thank you. Okay, so do we need a motion to move this to the next? One more comment? Okay.
Actually, Dona Cigari Riley, precinct five. Mr. Chairman, I hear you. I just wondered, did the master plan voted on back in 2014 include the current adjacent residential properties on Cottage Park Road?
Well, that's the whole question. I mean, that's the entire question. We don't know by those maps.
By which maps?
The ones that are in the master plan. It's the one that's the purple coloring. We don't... That's what we're trying to figure out. That's the question.
Because specifically, there's four homes down there, 23 Cottage Park Road, across the street from me, 30 and 20. That's a very specific question.
It is, and that's the question.
Not only the town's future, and as we said, we're for progress and some kind of development down there for a period of lighted area, which we all recognize, but also some assurance for the safeguard of the existing residents. Thank you so much.
You're welcome. All right, so do we just continue this portion of it until the 10th? Or do we motion now to close this portion, or how do you want to handle it?
We can just close the public comment now. They're having a public hearing on the 10th anyway.
All right, so we're going to close this portion of the meeting tonight. We're going to have a public comment and public hearing on June 10th as it relates to the maps and our recommendation. We're now going to move on to furthering the planning board to increase the next member. We're going to discuss replacing Mr. Carroll and what type of candidate we should be seeking. All right, so the topic now is we're going to discuss the type of candidate that we would like to see replace Mr. Carroll. I have received one resume and cover letter from Mr. Stephen Kudalakis, who is an engineer who is in the room tonight. Personally, I think an engineer would be a skill that we do not have on the board. We would like an engineer. We have two architects, two attorneys, a fire safety gentleman with 30 years' experience in the fire department. And then we have Mr. Proctor, who has 30 years' experience in civil service and water treatment, and he's invaluable as well. So the only building slot we really don't have is an engineer. And we did receive a letter and a resume of an engineer who is interested in that position. So personally, I think it's a good fit, but if anybody else would like to comment, and then we...
Did we get...
It was an email sent to town council. I was copied on it. So far, we've received one. Have we received any others?
Yeah, we received a couple.
Okay, so I'm only aware of one so far.
Right, that'll be sent out because we have it a week after it was announced at the town council. So the applications will stop being sent out to everybody tomorrow.
How many have you received?
Two so far.
Two so far. Have you received? You want to read them? Let us know who they are?
Jacked out, was he?
Jacked out?
Oh, I thought we were going to discuss names.
We're not. We already said one.
I apologize. I didn't realize that was something I couldn't do.
Yes, I've jacked out. I did submit the resume to the town clerk, I believe. I am a candidate for that position. Thank you very much.
And who is the other name? Let's just keep everything...
Steve.
Steven, who is the other one?
That's it, just the two so far.
Just two so far, okay.
I think you're right, though. I think someone in planning, engineering, or development, I think would be a good addition to the board.
Are you allowed to talk a little bit about...
I was unaware that we couldn't mention names. I thought it was an email that I had received and...
So the agenda?
It's okay. It's not against... It's not that we can't...
Well, I know, and I...
Because it's public record because we received them on email. So it's not that we can't mention them.
Well, I mean, I'd rather just make it a matter of public record that I was unaware of that, so if there's a responsibility, I'll accept that responsibility.
It's not a responsibility, it's fine.
Both candidates?
They're both here.
No, both candidates, are they in the engineering field?
I did not see Mr. Dowd's resume, so I don't know.
As of this point, the applications haven't been sent out yet. So we're kind of just discussing what we're looking for, right, in the candidate. But the applications haven't been sent out yet, so they're not aware of anybody's...
Your board does not have at this time the profile or the bio or the resume.
Right, they'll get them tomorrow. It's a week after the town council acknowledged it last week at their meeting. Then an opening is open. We gave it a week for any other applications to come.
So that puts that down, well, the public forum in June, I mean...
Well, all we can do is make a recommendation.
Merry Christmas to the candidates.
And then the town manager will make the decision and he'll make a recommendation.
No, I know the town president, the town president.
Council president, excuse me. I said the manager.
Yeah, the council president.
Council president will make the recommendation and the board will vote.
I agree with you that someone in engineering or planning, development would be, without seeing either resume, would be an area that we need to...
Especially now at this time, you need somebody with that strong background.
Right, with questions about stormwater management, with questions about infrastructure downtown, with questions about planning and zoning, I think that that's an opinion.
Is it your charge, when he brought up about the water and about Walden and the area, you know, and the mutainer, is that under, come under the planning board that people would submit designing?
There's supposed to be some engineering reports.
Engineering and designing reports.
They submit that to DPW, though. They don't submit that to us. But my comment to that was, and it's a motion I'd like to pass, but it's more that I think projects of an impactful size, of a certain size, should fall under a category where they have to submit a stormwater management plan, not to us, but to DPW. So it should become a requirement of their building submission.
Would DPW, though, take into consideration and include you folks in how and what and why it's happening or, you know, so that they get some input from... It seems like the planning board is charged with all of these important factors and yet it's also apparent that they keep putting you off to here and putting you off to there. I mean, I...
Yeah, absolutely. Then I can comment about you then.
What is the discussion right now? Are you talking about the appointments or what?
No.
We're just having a kind of, it's relative to that, but she's asked a question as it relates to maps and engineering reports.
I thought we had that already tonight.
We did.
We're talking about the water.
To answer your question.
Thank you.
Chris stating that he would want to file a motion, if that motion gets passed, the motion would be to require, to be determined, a particular size project must submit that plan to DPW. What we can do is when we see a plan of that size, a project of that size, we can ask for the input and opinion of DPW after looking at that plan, what they want to do. And we can take that into account.
So that's pulling that team together, correct?
Yes, and if you read the statute, the main role of the planning board is to make recommendations to the governing board. In Winthrop, it would be the town council. We're not supposed to be political. We're only supposed to be an advisory board. And whether town council accepts our recommendations or not is their decision. And that's what we're charged with. Now, what form that takes depends on the question that we're being presented and depends on each member's opinion, but that's basically what our role is. We're an advisory role. We're a recommending role, but we're not, we don't implement. We just advise, if that helps you. Any, Mr. Riley?
Just an observation for someone about the task of making appointments. The council president has to make recommendations and make appointments that go... The planning board, it goes before the council and requires the council approval. For many of the other boards, it does not require the council's approval. The council can vote against the proposal if they so wish, but if the council president nominates someone to, say, the council on aging or the tree committee or something like that, after 30 days, he places or files to be appointed with the town clerk, absent any vote, negative vote by the council, it goes into effect. But anybody that can bind the town, that can make a decision that binds the town, the Board of Appeals, the Licensing Board, the Planning Board, the Board of Health, all of them who have regulatory authority and can make independent judgments and rulings require the approval of a council. The task gets to be kind of complicated a lot of times. You sometimes have nobody, you know, there's a vacancy and you can't find anybody calling up people, like, would you consider being on this board? Then you get, the next time you might go, there you have a surplus of people. And you're trying to pick from three people who want to volunteer for the board, are qualified, are serious people that you'd like to put on. What I would try to do is make a sort of choice of one, but tell the others, hold off and maybe you'd like to be on this committee or maybe you could serve over here. And so it gets, when the planning, the planning board, when we went from an elected board to an appointed board, consisted of five members. I believe we took, I took a look at the planning board and I talked to members of the planning board. So I don't want to give away all the secrets, but, well, we thought we needed an attorney on the planning board. So we increased the size of the planning board. Two attorneys were appointed. That was back probably in 2008 and people have been serving there ever since.
Yeah, you appointed that.
But at that time, what we did was we were taking a look at...
At the female.
What does the planning board need? What, you know, what kind of background is necessary to complement the members who are already there? And I think your idea of trying to take a look at what kind of skill set you'd be looking for that you would need to augment and assist, you know, think would be a good idea for the council president. I think you, you know, the simple thing is just independently talk to them and tell them what you think of the avenue that he should pursue.
Thank you. Thank you very much for that. Mr. Dowd?
Yes, sir. Since we didn't go by the agenda, I guess...
But I'm the member, just so, I'm the chair. I didn't, I, you've already made that comment. It was my mistake. I can call, excuse me, I'm talking. I can call it as I see it and it was an error. I don't know, do I have to say that anymore clearly? I didn't realize I couldn't talk names. I thought this was open forum. I could discuss...
You read the agenda.
I didn't, Mr. Dowd. I'm not going to allow you to be disrespectful. It was an error. I've already said that three times.
All right, since we're only discussing one person who was an engineer, you haven't read my resume yet. Do you have it, Carol? Excuse me, Denise? No, all right, so you don't have it, you're right.
Wait, just, hold on, I'm going to interrupt you for a second. We aren't discussing any person. We haven't discussed any person. I haven't seen any resumes. I don't know who submitted anything. My comment to the board and to the public was, I agree with Chris in that an engineer, developer, or planner would be a good addition to our board because we're lacking in one now. I don't believe that that means we're talking about a specific person, just to clarify.
Right now, on the town council, we have three members that have to recuse themselves from voting because they have moneyed interest in property in the Center Business District. Mr. Lucero, Mr. Christopher, and Mr. Latiri. So we're not getting a true representation from that, from the members of the town council. I believe, Steve, I don't know your last name, all due respect, gentlemen, every time I've seen you come down here, I appreciate you taking an interest. I believe Steve owns a piece of property down the center. Is that correct, Steve?
I don't know who you are. I'm sorry. Steve who?
The engineer.
This is my disposition.
It's an open discussion. If I could finish my opinion, my comment, please.
No questions back in.
I don't think that having somebody join a group that can't vote because he has to recuse himself because he owns a piece of property down the center would be in the best interest of the planning board or the best interest of the town. Thank you very much.
Is there any further comments? All right. I don't think we have any, anything further to discuss. We can take a motion to adjourn if anybody would like to adjourn.
I will make the motion to adjourn. Thank you, guys.
Yep, hi.
Thank you very much.